Mayor Town Council for March 7th at 7:00. All council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Rivera, who will be joining us later in the evening. But if you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of special presentations tonight. So I'm a, no offense Judge, but I'm going to save the best for last. And I'm going to invite the Judge of the Municipal Court, Parker Down, for a special presentation. And we'll save Tony Young for the last one, so. The Judge was going to make an open comment, but I said then I'd have a three-minute timer and I'd have to shut you off. And I, I don't want to, just in case I have to come before you, so.
And I had it for less than three minutes.
Awesome, awesome.
Just to begin my second line, I was all prepared for all this time. So, you can make your work as council members.
I'm going to fix your microphone.
There you go, very good.
I'm used to a different place in the room now.
Do you want to treat seats with me? You're used to being up here, right?
No, sir, you're right where you're supposed to be. I'm Kevin Seidel, I'm the Municipal Court Judge in the town of Parker. My address, more than ever, seems to be right here in the building, so. As you're all aware, our current Court Administrator, Sue Ratcliffe, has announced her resignation effective March 18th. Sue served the town for 24 years, 22 of those as Court Administrator. Under Sue's tenure, the Municipal Court evolved and improved in innumerable ways, both in programs and in technology. Sue has been dedicated to providing fair and courteous service to defendants, victims, jurors, witnesses, attorneys, wedding parties, who used to come for our free pre-COVID weddings, Boy Scouts who came to observe, and the occasional service animal. On behalf of the Municipal Court, I take this opportunity to thank Sue and to wish her all the best in her future pursuits. And I also wanted to provide you with a brief update about Teen Court. The eloquence with which the Teen Court volunteers spoke on February 7th is testimony to the importance and success of the program. Unfortunately, we ran into some staffing issues back in January, and that led to me putting a pause on new cases coming into Teen Court. And now, again, unfortunately, our staffing issues will continue until a new Court Administrator is in place. As you're all aware, Teen Court revolves around real, active criminal cases in the Municipal Court, and Teen Court falls under the Municipal Court's supervision. But although Teen Court is a tremendous program, it is not a mandatory part of the work of Municipal Court. Until the staffing issues are resolved, we must prioritize our legal and constitutional responsibilities, including two jury trials coming up before the end of April, and all of the current and future criminal matters in the court. And we will not be able to refer new cases to Teen Court for a while longer. In the meantime, Town Administration and I are committed to keeping the Teen Court volunteers involved, and we will find some time for training, education, and activities. We plan to invite current volunteers and their parents to a session where I will outline the legal structure, both Municipal and Teen Court, and give more context to the priorities and choices. Rest assured that we know how important Teen Court is to all of you, to the town, and to the defendants and the volunteers in Teen Court. We will fully resume Teen Court as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Excellent, thanks Judge. Council, any questions for the Judge?
I just want to say thank you for recognizing Sue. She is an awesome person.
We will certainly be, be missing her and will work very hard to keep everything going while the transition takes place.
Excellent, thanks for working with everyone to make that happen. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. Administration's been wonderful and happy to, to do whatever we can.
Awesome, and it's a rarity that the Council has their three employees in front of them. So y'all want to give out any raises or anything tonight? Or no, okay, all right. I tried, I tried. Thanks Judge, appreciate it. All right, the next item is one of my favorite parts of the night. I'm going to remember my glasses this time. So if we can have Tony Young come down. So the bullpen's going to get pretty crowded pretty fast because we're going to make sure we get your whole family down. Tony, so who are you going to come down to as the nominator? So I'm going to introduce you all to a friend that we met. Gosh, is it December timeframe? It was pulled like that. But Tony Young, for Councilman Rivera and Dyak's benefit, a graduate of Hunter Rosa High School.
I'm a freshman too.
Oh, and a customer of Post Children, too. So two years ago tonight, you received a transplant of a heart and a kidney, if I remember correctly. And so then you were honored by the Donor for Life, the Donors Alliance?
Donor Alliance.
Donor Alliance, and you got to write on the rose spray. So if you can, go back and tell us what that was like two years ago. I know from your, you know, when we met, we had your nurse out there with us. And we got to, we got to hear a lot of the backstory. But tell us what that was like. You were already in the donor clinic, but you got the call.
So I, I had been hospitalized at that point for over two weeks. With heart transplant, there's different statuses on the list. There's six different statuses. Six, five, and four, you can still be at home and on the list. Three, you're hospitalized. Two, you're hospitalized with special things to help keep you alive. And one, death is in. I had just been moved up to status two a few days earlier. And there is constant talk of getting balloon pumps, seminopelo pumps, and all sorts of extraordinary measures to keep me going. But two years ago today, one of my doctors and the fellows, they came in and they said they had an offer that they wanted for me to accept. It was a heart that they thought was good for me, as well as a kidney. And if I accepted and signed the paper that morning, then I would be in surgery that evening. The heart was blown in, I don't know where from. The kidney did not get to catch a ride by the way it comes and stuff. But yeah, this time, two years ago, I was on the table. I don't know the exact timeframe. I might have been in cardiac arrest right now at that point, two years ago. My heart wanted to give me one last farewell before it was taken out. But yeah, they performed 12 hours surgery for the heart transplant. And then a day later, which will be two years on Wednesday, four hours for the kidney transplant.
Wow, wow, that's a lot. And you're here today. And did they let you drive the float?
No, so with the float they had, there were 18 of us who were recipients. There were four people who walked along the side who were living donors. And then they had photographs from a bunch of angel donors. They called the fluorograph. So it was a way to help honor all those angel donors who have gifted their organs, tissues, corneas to other people to save lives, improve quality of lives, that sort of thing. On my particular little section, they had little gondolas for us to be in. And I was in a float with a woman named Vicki from Oklahoma and Jennifer from California. Vicki is a liver recipient. Her liver transplant was over 30 years ago, which is phenomenal. And then Jennifer had received, at first, a liver. And then she'll be, I think, just a few months ago, she was a year ago from her kidney transplant. So I also like to joke, between the three of us on our little gondola, there are a total of eight kidneys. Because now when they do a kidney transplant, they don't necessarily remove old kidneys, they add. So I have three kidneys right now.
So now I'm going to bring down some of your friends from the Donor Alliance. So Jennifer, Cheryl, y'all come down here. Come on down. I told you, it's going to get really crowded. Y'all don't come down. Because we still got your family to come down, too.
They're the most important.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So Jennifer, you're the CEO of the Donor Alliance. So tell us, how, how does the average person help out and become eligible to give, in the unlikely case that you don't, you, you want to give and you're a match? What's, what's that process? What starts it, what's that process?
Sure, Mayor Tober, thank you for having us. We're really happy to have Tony here. And to all of you in the Parker community, you actually do this really well. And that's by joining up on the donor registry to be an organizing tissue donor at the time of your death. You can do that when you go to get your driver's license or state ID. But you can also sign up on the donor registry through donate life colorado dot work at any time. And it's really important to us, we actually work on messaging that anyone can be a donor. There's no upper age limits, there's not anything in medical history that would rule someone out. So most Coloradans say yes, nearly 68% of us say yes to the donor registry. And I would invite you, that if you haven't made that decision yet, to think about it. If you have made the decision to join up on the donor registry, thank you, and please be sure and tell your family.
Awesome, great words, good words. Any words from the local person here?
Well, I would just like to let all of the Coloradans know that we're number one on the donor registry nationally. So thank you to all of you and your family members that continue to say yes.
That's awesome. Councilmember, you're the nominator. Anything to say on behalf of Tony? Or anything before bringing the big family down?
Mike, I just really want to thank Tony for representing Parker so well in that parade and all the hard work that we did to that. And also his brother Mike and his mother, who have taken care of him. And also there's a mother, Auntie Blair, I believe, that took care of him during the time that he was sick. To know Tony's story, it really takes a family to see someone through this. And his family saw him through. And so we're very honored and pleased to have him here today.
So I'm going to grab the certificate while Tony's family. So Mike, Jeff, you want to come down? Auntie, Paul? So just come on over, come on over. And then, then everybody in the Council stand up. I know we get lots of pictures, so don't worry. So, but this certificate of recognition is awarded to Tony Young and really to the Donor Alliance, too, because that's. That's your partnership here for your dedication to educating the Parker community on the importance of organ, eye, and tissue donation. And it's due to today, March 7th, and signed by me, the Mayor of Parker. Congratulations, thank you, and thank you for all you do. That's what you do. And we're so glad, we're so glad. So, Council, let's get a picture.
You want one with your phone first? There we go. Okay, I got one with your phone.
Can you get words?
Yes.
That looks great.
I'll support the piece.
And I'll do a tight one. Fantastic. It's Tony.
One up.
Thank you, sir.
Well, now I think we should just adjourn. I mean, how do you go from that to do any business here? So, all right, next up is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public and other interested individuals to speak about items not on the agenda. If you would like to register for public comment, there was a signup sheet in the back that you can sign your name to. You can provide an email to the Town Clerk's Office by 5:00 PM today, or you can make a comment on Zoom. So is there anybody in the room that hasn't signed up to make public comment on item not on the agenda? See none. Chris, do we have anybody online?
Is there anyone in Zoom who wishes to make a public comment at this time? Please raise your hand. There is not.
All right, and we had no one sign up. So we'll move on to item number four, Reports, Items, and Comments from Mayor and Council. I'm going to assert to my left, Councilman Dyak.
Thank you very much. Let's see here, since the last meeting, I had an E470 Finance Committee. We, we rolled out the Audit Plan Presentation. KPMG does the E470 Authority's audit. We also had a Debt Management and Municipal Advisor Briefing. Stiefel is the financial advisor to E470. And we had a staff change, so the, the rest of the group came to provide a briefing. On the 25th, we had a Council Retreat. All of us were in attendance. The second, we had a Douglas County Transportation Forum. A couple of items of note, we had a $400,000 funding swap approval. Effectively, Larkspur is giving $400,000 of federal money to Douglas County to get $400,000 of, of county money. That, that helps defederalize their project and saves Larkspur money in the long run. We also talked about the Lone Tree Mobility Hub. And we are trying to get regional money, or Call One money, so we can help Lone Tree and Douglas County and CEDOT build that. So that's to be determined. That will be discussed in, in March. And we will hopefully get a result in May of 2022. We had a Dr. Cog Work Session on the same day, the second. We had a AAA, the Area Agency on Aging Funding Overview. They indicate that they have some one-time money that is potentially available. I am trying to track down the parameters of that. The hope is that maybe Douglas County, or specifically Parker, has the ability to have a one-time money event. In the past, we have helped the senior center acquire a bus. I'm just looking for additional information from the AAA side to see if, if there's a potential match there. So more to be, to be had with that situation. Dr. Cog also talked about the RTD System Optimization Plan. Being a big board, we tried to provide comments to that. So we all don't agree, so we tried to go high up to provide some high-level comments with the more specific comments coming from our individual municipalities. And we also talked about our Board Retreat, which is April 2nd, provided an update by the Executive Director, Doug Rex. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrington.
Thank you. On February 24th, we had a Board of Directors Meeting for the Douglas County Housing Partnership. We met the new Executive Director, Maria Siano. And she is a, like I said at our retreat, she's a ray of sunshine. And she's going to be a great asset to this partnership. She has some pretty big shoes to fill with the outgoing Executive Director, Diane Leesley, who's been with the organization for nearly 10 years. And she, Diane was responsible for so many wonderful programs and acquisitions for affordable housing, including Oakwood Senior Centers, both one and two, the one in Highlands Ranch, and those are just a few. And we had a presentation from Ulysses Development Group proposing a new project for senior affordable housing in Castle Rock within the Meadows Master Plan Community. It's kind of right near the new interchange off of Santa Fe. And they are proposing a four-story unit with 200 affordable units. And it will be called Castle Rock Senior Center, or Castle Rock Senior. And then I also met with Councilmember Pogue on a plan to move the Greater Parker Foundation forward with kind of a scaled-down and more concise approach. And then presented my very, very fancy PowerPoint presentation to all of Council and staff at our Council Retreat. And together, we decided we're going to be revising our mission statement to focus more on the arts and culture.
Councilmember Hefta.
It's hard to top those past two people.
Lot of stuff going on.
Very busy week for some folks. I had a less busy week, but I did manage to attend the Special District Association of Colorado, which tracks bills going through the Colorado Legislature. And there are approximately 70 bills that are being discussed right now in the legislature. Of notable, of note, would, are a couple of them for, for the town of Parker, which would be the wildfire mitigation incentives for local government, and the wildfire mitigation and recovery, and the Assistant Landowner Wildfire Mitigation.
Councilman Hendricks?
No reports, Mayor.
Councilmember Pogue?
Well, I think that I attended another Senate hearing relative to Senate Bill 132, I think it was. And so that's my second time in about three weeks that I've gone down there to testify. And I'm beginning to learn my way around that place. But other than that, you know, the retreat and our meeting, that's about it, thank you.
Great, Councilwoman Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, busy, busy week, but it's all been stated. We had a wonderful retreat, got a great council and great staff. And I just have the honor, I had the honor last night of, this is hard for me to say, attending the Richard Marx Concert. I know, I know, coming shaking his head back there at me. I, he was not my cup of tea back when he was, when he was hot or when he was top of the charts. Like, he's, he's quite the accomplished artist. But I will say, it was an incredible show. It really was. The guy is a performer, incredibly talented, incredible songwriter, and just everything from comedy to a variation of genre. But most importantly, he's coming out with a new album, and I'm not touting Richard Marx here, but I'm just going to say that he, he has two new songs on that new album that he played for the first time in Parker, Colorado, last night. So the world premiere for two songs was in Parker, at the Pace Center. So, no, in a roundabout way, I'm just trying to say that we have an incredible asset in the Pace. Really, really good shows. And if you get a chance, please, please, take a time to support local arts and check out a show at the Pace. It was just, it was fabulous, thank you.
And he's a groupie.
Yeah, I mean, I joined the fan club.
It's hard to go after the Richard Marx frontman over there, but see what I can do. So on Sunday, I attended Lutheran High School's grand opening of their new expanded West Wing. It is amazing, if you ever get a chance to get over there, it is a feat. And their students are very lucky. I think they've already outgrown it, though. On Thursday, I attended a ribbon cutting for Parker's newest business, Timeless Aesthetics, I think is what it's called. And the owner's baby, a six-week-old baby, I held the whole time. And so, you know, the conversation when I went home was, no, no, not another one? And the answer is no. And then last, I had the honor of attending the Blue and Gold Banquet at Scout Pack 649, who, and after I delivered a very eloquent speech on what it's like to be a mayor, the only question was, do you know the Chief of Police? So I'm, I'm making the chief come with me after that, so. Anyways, that's it for Reports, Items, and Comments. Next up is our Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion on consent agenda items unless Council votes to remove an item for discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will be, will not be removed for discussion. So Council, you have items 5A through 5H for your review.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A through H, please.
A second.
The motion was made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. This will be a roll call. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next up on our agenda is the first of two public hearings. Item number six, Public Hearings, Anthology North, segments 1B, 1C, Preliminary Plan. And I think, Brianna, Simon, you're going to take it.
Yes.
So while they are teeing up, Council, just want to remind you of our process here. So Brianna, I assume you have an applicant here?
Yes.
To do a presentation. So we'll hear from staff, we'll ask staff questions, hear from the applicant, ask the applicant any questions, we'll go for public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the Council for any debate, comments, and then we'll take a vote. So, and it looks like we'll have probably two motions on this one to fill it out.
We'll have three motions.
Three motions, okay.
Yes.
All right, that's all I can stretch for you.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. This is a proposal for a preliminary plan for Anthology North. The subject property is located on the south side of Hess Road between Chambers Road and Matsonbacher Road. The applicant PCS Group is requesting the approval of a preliminary plan for segment 1B and 1C of the Anthology North Development. The sketch plan for all of segment one, including the area being discussed tonight, and the preliminary plan for segment 1A was previously recommended for approval by Planning Commission on July 8th of 2021 and approved by Town Council on August 2nd of 2021. The future sketch and preliminary plans for segment two will accommodate commercial and mixed-use developments. The preliminary plan for segment 1B and 1C is located in purple and orange on the map above. This includes 860 single-family residential lots, 72 townhome residential lots, 106 duplex residential lots, 60.5 acres of open space, and 9.3 acres of park space. The proposed preliminary plan identifies the layout of the subdivision to meet the standards outlined in the Land Development Ordinance, the Anthology North Plan Development, and the related roadway and stormwater design criteria manuals. The annexation agreement for the Anthology North Development outlines the amount of parks, open space, trails, and school land dedication required. For segment 1B and 1C preliminary plan, the applicant is proposing four neighborhood parks that total 9.35 acres of park space. Within all of segment one, the park space proposed exceeds the minimum amount of park space required. The applicant is proposing 60.5 acres of open space, which satisfies the minimum requirements of open space. Trail systems are proposed to provide connectivity throughout the development. The proposed trails will link, link in with sidewalks and trails connections. of open space. Trail systems are proposed to provide connectivity throughout the development. The proposed trails will link, link in with sidewalks and trails connections in the neighboring subdivisions and will connect to the Cherry Creek Trail. The proposed preliminary plan for segment 1B and 1C meets the obligations outlined in the approved parks, trails, and open space master plan. As outlined within the annexation agreement, the developers required to provide one school site in segment 1. For segment 1B preliminary plan, the applicant is proposing an elementary school site of 10.9 acres in size. The Douglas County School District has stated the proposed site meets the criteria for a school. Segment 1B and 1C of the Anthology North development will be served by Stro Road and Chambers Road extension shown in red. These extensions provide connections to the existing infrastructure and road network as outlined in the town's transportation master plan. A series of new collector roads and extensions of existing collector roads will be constructed to support the connections through the community and between the arterial roads, which are shown in blue. And this is a good transition into the other transportation items.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Good evening, Mayor and council, sorry about that. So items 6A1 and 6A2 before you tonight are related to the annexation agreement and the waiver resolution for this property. The developer has requested amendments to these documents that will allow them to defer construction of the sidewalk on the west side of Chambers Road to a future phase of development. The reason for this is that the Chambers Road design includes what's called a meandering style of sidewalk on the east side of Chambers Road. Basically, I'll show you a picture on the next slide, but it extends further out from the roadway, it has to incorporate into the adjacent grading, there's landscaping interspersed, it's a visually better way to align the sidewalk. So they have a similar style planned for the west side, and they'd like to be able to integrate that with the future design of segment 3, so they've asked to defer the construction of that sidewalk. This next slide shows, kind of illustrates what the concept is. You can see the typical offset of the sidewalk, and they're gaining additional width from that roadway, interspersing it with landscaping, and kind of trying to integrate it into the adjacent filing. So they would like to do the same thing on the west side of Chambers Road. So the request of council is to amend those documents to allow them to defer that construction, to allow it to be done with the development on the west side of Chambers Road. And this last slide illustrates when, when the sidewalk on the west side will be required to be built. First of all, any, with any development, the first final plat on segment 3, which is shown there on the west side of Chambers Road, that's the future residential development. With the first plat, they would have to build all the, all the west sidewalk on Chambers Road from Hess all the way down to Stro Road. Additionally, if the segment 2 commercial there, up just out the Hess Road were to develop, they would have to build a sidewalk adjacent to that property with that development.
Now back to the preliminary plan again. So the neighborhood was meeting, a neighborhood meeting was held on January 19th of this year. The neighboring residents requested additional vegetation to be provided between the existing residential homes and the proposed trail connection throughout the development. The applicant has stated that they will evaluate incorporating additional landscaping, screening, and evergreen vegetation along this area to the greatest extent possible at final plat. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has outlined within the staff report has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, the project meets the minimum requirements of the Land Development Ordinance and the Anthology North Plan Development, the project provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. All referral agency comments have been addressed, and the public notice requirements have been met. Staff and Planning Commission are recommending Town Council approve the Anthology North preliminary plan for segment 1B and 1C, subject to the condition listed in staff's report. Staff is also recommending that Town Council approve the Fifth Amendment to the amended and restated Stro Ranch and Hess annexation agreement and Resolution Number 22-014. Staff is available for any questions that council members may have, and the applicant also has a presentation today.
All right, council, let's, let's start with questions for staff. Councilman Hendricks?
No questions, Mayor.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, what would be, by this delay that they're asking for, how long is that delay anticipated? I mean, and will there be a negative impact to the subdivision that's built previously?
So it depends on the pace of development. So it would, again, be tied to the first final plat in segment 3, which is all the residential development on the west side. So really, it depends on the pace of the market. The developer may be able to give you a better idea of what that would be. But in the time being, there won't be any development on the west side, so there really would be no need for pedestrians to be over there using that sidewalk. There will be full connections at Stro, I'm sorry, full signals and pedestrian crosswalks at Stro and Hess. And we're also gonna be building a pedestrian underpass that may not be connected until the sidewalk is there, but there will be multiple options for pedestrians in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Rivera?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, I, I have never heard of a meandering sidewalk. I was just about to look that up. So could you explain what that means in development terms?
Yeah, you know, I would probably defer that question maybe to John and the design team. It's, it was his brainchild, and he can probably explain what they were trying to accomplish with that. I guess when he's up there, yeah.
Okay.
Alex, I always try to steer you wrong there, so. All right, council, any other questions for our team? All right, Brandy, you wanna bring up your presenter?
Yes, we have John Presswich with PCS Group.
Green. And if you'll come down and state your name and address for the record. Chris, are you gonna do the intros?
That's the least I can do.
All right, all right.
I wanted the opportunity to introduce John, because this is the last time we're gonna be in front of you for a while.
Excellent.
So Chris Elliott, on behalf of Anthology North. Last time, you'll be referring to the project by that name. It'll be henceforth called Tantera. And we are excited to be here. The, you'll all remember that we had agreed, after being abused by Mr. Williams, that we would construct all of Chambers from Hess all the way to Stro. And he calls me regularly, asking if it's started yet. We do, we, the, there is a prerequisite that we get segments 1B and 1C preliminary approved henceforth why we're here tonight. Get that done, we can get filing 1 done, and we can get things started, and intend to build it as a single phase, so we're excited to see that happen. To Councilwoman Pogue's question about the sidewalk, our concern was, since we were building so much that was, in essence, off-site and away from the rest of the initial phases of development, that there was no sense in having landscaping and sidewalk on the opposite side of the street when there isn't gonna be any traffic or use on that side for now. And as soon as we can move to that segment on the west side, that sidewalk and the landscaping will be completed then. So without any further ado, turn it over to John Presswich.
Great. Thanks, sir. And if you will state your name and address for the record?
For sure. Good evening, John Presswich with PCS Group, 200 Kalamaz Street, Denver, Colorado, 80223. First off, always a big thank you to staff for their help in getting us here this evening. We're excited being here in person. Chris already mentioned that, you know, we're now calling the community Tantera. That first slide that was up there was one of our custom shade shelters, and we kind of feel like that all plays into the way the design has evolved with preserving the drainage corridors and natural vegetation in those corridors, and really highlighting a more naturalistic landscape approach. So, you know, we are big believers in collaboration. We truly recognize it takes a team effort to put together a successful application, and we always want to acknowledge the effort that it takes in the creation of a new community for the town of Parker. This slide highlights many of the team members who have helped us get to this point this evening. And again, thanks to staff, you know, we've, we've kind of worked together throughout this entire process. So on to this evening. You know, we are here to present the preliminary plan for segment 1B and C of the Tantera community. There's a few items I just wanted to highlight. One is just sort of, you know, the reminder that we processed a PD amendment to incorporate those dendritic planning principles. And again, this preliminary plan is consistent with those principles. Again, the dendritic planning essentially evaluates the natural drainages on the property and then works the plan around those natural drainage areas. And overall, segment 1 is now providing about 15 acres more park and open space than what was anticipated in the PD. And finally, no additional units or increase in density is being proposed with the preliminary plan. As was mentioned, you know, another major element that we've committed to in working with town staff is, is the construction of Chambers Road all the way from Hess Road on the north and Stro to the south with the initial phase of the community. We think that's a really big deal, not just for Tantera, but for the town of Parker at large. All right, so sort of bigger picture, I think you all pretty much know this, but, you know, Tantera is located west of Matzenbacher Road in the existing Anthology neighborhood, south of Hess Road, north of the extension of Stro Road, and east of the Ruder Hess reservoir. Next slide, thanks. This slide shows the various segments for the Tantera community. Again, tonight, the more detailed area is segment B and C, the purple and orange colors. Next slide, please. This image is really just for reference. It's the currently approved PD, and then over top, I added a red dashed line that shows the approximate boundaries for segment 1. Next slide shows the overall sketch plan. So in addition to the preservation of the primary drainages, we have the 34-acre neighborhood park in segment 1A. Segment B and C have an additional four neighborhood parks that relate to the themes that we established in neighborhood, in segment 1A. And then, of course, you can see the extent of Chambers Road being built in its entirety with this initial phase. So, you know, again, as part of working with staff through this process, we put together these, these open space and park tracking exhibits. They track all of the park and open space throughout the community within segment 1. And again, in total, we now have a little over 15 additional acres that are being designed as park and open space, which is about an increase of 10% from the PD. And again, just to orient everyone, we're gonna be speaking specifically about B and C, the purple and orange colors. And then the next slide here is an illustrative version of the plan for all of segment 1. The red dashed line highlights the currently approved segment 1A, and then the balance of the illustrative depicts segments B and C. And then the next slide will make it a little bit easier for you, because it removes all of the color outside of the areas of B and C, just to make it easier to focus on what we're talking about this evening. Again, the site design has been planned around the natural drainage corridors, with integrated trail connections and parks also taking advantage of these natural areas, and B and C is outlined with that purple dashed line. And then we're gonna zoom in real quick on the next slide. So in general, the grading for the lots ends at the rear of the lots. That helps protect the drainage and natural vegetation. There are trail connections throughout the property, including a commitment to build an underpass under Chambers on the west side of the property. This was not a requirement of the annexation agreement or PD, but it is something that we have agreed to do as part of creating an even more connected trail system for the larger community. This illustrative also highlights some of the neighborhood and other park areas that are integrated into the plan, and then I just added a quarter-mile circle around those parks, which represents a five-minute walk, just really to depict how well this community is covered from a park and trail perspective. And so as part of the previous public hearings, we heard from our neighbors in the existing Anthology community that they had drainage and groundwater concerns in their existing community, and we wanted to ensure that what we're doing will not impact them. We had our geotechnical consultant reevaluate the borings that they'd done as part of the analysis for this property, and they verified that our proposal will have no impact on the groundwater, because our proposed improvements are well above the groundwater elevations. And we created these sections, it was part of the neighborhood meeting, so people could come up and kind of look at where their house was and kind of the relationship between our proposal and where they live today. So I wanted to take just a few moments and highlight some of these neighborhood parks. They're, they're kind of the exciting thing for me. You know, as part of this PD amendment process, we developed that parks master plan, really to make sure that all the parks in Tantera had a full complement of amenities, and to ensure that the parks weren't all the same, that they had unique elements. So this neighborhood park is on the east side of the community. It's adjacent to the major east-west drainage. It includes a trail connection to the overall community trail network. And then we're taking advantage of the change in topography by incorporating an embankment slide, as well as utilizing the natural slope of the property as a backstop for a half-basketball court. And I think you'll notice, as we run through these parks, we've created some really unique custom play equipment. This park happens to feature two large acorns that are connected with a rope bridge, slide features, climbing areas. And the park also has that custom shade shelter that's unique to the Tantera community. This park is also located adjacent to a natural drainage, and again, it includes a trail connection. So many of the parks really are located, you know, kind of along those, the community trail network. This park, we think, is really fun and includes something for, for really all ages. It actually has a putting green, you can see in the image to the right. And then again, playing into the theme for all of the parks, it includes that custom play equipment. In this case, it's a really cool treehouse fort with rope climbing, and again, another embankment slide, trying to really pay attention and play with that natural terrain. The next park that'll come up here, this one's a little bit more centrally located in the community. Again, it includes that large iconic shade shelter, plenty of picnic tables, built-in cornhole, playground areas, and a large multipurpose turf play area for active uses. It's really the major element of this, because it's a relatively flat park, and again, centrally located. So many of you maybe might remember that in the large community park, we featured a really large red-tailed hawk as an iconic playground structure. We wanted to keep that theme going, and this park features a really fun owl. The park also has turf areas for play, shade shelter, trails, all that kind of stuff. But the real centerpiece is this custom owl play structure. You can see the owl features rock climbing up the wing, and you can see that in the bottom-left image, and then a rope adjacent to that, rope climbing adjacent to that, as well as the opportunity to climb inside of the owl, and a slide that you can go through the owl as well. So, you know, as part of our design process, we build pretty detailed computer models to really analyze the design. This image depicts the concept for our primary entry monument. It's really, the sculptural element is really the logo of Tantera, and then just kind of pulled apart, and it sort of starts to appear like a bird. Next slide, please. So, again, not, not, this isn't necessarily a part of segment B and C, but this image does show the new Chambers Road bridge that will cross Oak Gulch. Oak Gulch has a grade-separated regional trail. We are proposing some sort of stone monoliths adjacent to the bridge, and again, that full section of Chambers Road will be built with the initial phase of the Tantera community. The next slide shows our secondary entry monuments. So there's the logo there that's, you know, then pulled apart in the large monument. This will be used at the entries into the community from Chambers and Stro Roads. And again, we're kind of highlighting that natural landscape feel with ornamental grass plantings, and then evergreen trees used as a backdrop. And then just kind of as a reminder to kind of, you know, think back to the, to the park themes that tie back to segment 1A, or sorry, how they tie to B and C, tying the whole community together. This image is looking over the pool area, and you can start to see that red-tailed hawk structure on the right side of the image, again, as well as those iconic shade shelters. And then this next slide will give you a little bit better look at that hawk that you saw in segment 1A. Again, it includes slides, multi-level play. You can see an embankment slide on the right side of the, of the image here. So hopefully, you can kind of get a sense of how all of the, the community theme is tying together between the various segments. And then really, just to summarize, you know, the, the proposal is for a preliminary plan for segments 1B and C. Overall, the proposed preliminary plan increases the amount of park and open space by about 15 acres in all of segment 1, again, a little bit more than a 10% increase. And also provides, is consistent with the sketch plan and PD. Finally, staff, as well as Planning Commission, has recommended approval based on the approval criteria. And thank you for your time this evening. We're happy to answer questions, and I'm gonna start with the meandering sidewalk. So when they don't meander, they basically are just exactly parallel to the road. So you'll have a, depending on, on the road classification, you may have a 10-foot tree lawn, and then the sidewalk just follows exactly the road. When we have the opportunity and we have space, because we have buffers along Chambers, we like to take that sidewalk where the grade will allow and, and pull it further away from Chambers Road. So it, it's, that's the meander part. west side, we really want to have that same opportunity, once we know where the, the planning lands on the west side of Chambers, to, because that will impact how the grading works, to then figure out how we can meander the, the sidewalk on the west side of Chambers.
Councilmember Hefta, do you want to continue questions?
I'm assuming it'll be level, correct? It's, even though it's meandering, it'll be graded properly.
Exactly, yep, yep.
And, and just for, for overall information purposes, was this a more difficult piece of land overall to, you know, grade and structure?
It, it has topography on it that we're, we're working with for sure, but I think that that adds to the interest for the community and, and, you know, the visual aspect of it. And frankly, going back, I mean, we went, kind of took the plans that were done 10 years ago, let's say, and really rethought them in utilizing all of the natural drainages and preserving those. So I think that actually helped in some respects, but it's challenging. There's, there's definitely topography on the site, but I think the way we've approached it, you know, most of the natural vegetation is in those drainage corridors. So by utilizing that process, I think that helps, helps create a better community and also makes our job a tiny bit easier.
Did you say you were looking at these, this for the last 10 years as well?
Oh, you know, honestly, this is funny. I, I worked on this master plan almost 22 years ago, but it's gone in various phases and, and, and finally now we're, we're really bringing it to fruition, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington, questions?
Has it been going on since the 80s?
Absolutely.
All right. I just, did everyone hear that?
It was back when Richard Marx was popular.
And I can't remember if the, were you talking about pickleball courts last time?
Yes, we, the, the large community park has pickleball courts in it.
Okay. How many courts?
One, two, three, four, I believe.
Okay.
Two, two different areas, two courts in each area.
I'll have lots of comments, but no further questions.
Councilman Dyak.
No questions, but I just got a text from Tom Williams. He wants to know if the Chambers Road has been started.
Who wants a comedian today? Councilman Hendrix.
Well, I'll jump on the pickleball court. Any other sports like tennis or basketball near the parks you can speak to?
Sure, yeah, there's basketball, the half-court basketball in, in Segment B. I don't, we do not have a basketball court in, in Segment 1A. We have a multipurpose field, the pickleball courts, there's a, a really cool trike track going through there, there's several different play areas, the pool area, small clubhouse, parking. Am I missing anything? Am I missing anything? I think that's.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue.
No questions, just a comment. The, the issue of this area went back, as far as I recall, probably in the late 1980s or the early 1991, with the beginning development of Stro Ranch.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the only thing I've heard about that since then is the lament of no golf course.
Yeah.
Councilman Rivera.
No questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this point, we are going to open this up for public comment from anyone in the audience, or if you're on Zoom and want to raise your hand, although I, I see that the timer is not on, is there? There we go. Awesome. All right, so anyone in the room wishing to make public comment on this item, please come forward, or if you're on Zoom, Chris will ask you to raise your hand or indicate All right, Mr. Elfnar, if you will state your name and address for the record, then I will start your three-minute timer.
You bet. Thanks. Ian Elfnar, 15750 East Indian Brook Circle in Parker.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm just a little, I'm curious more so than anything, I think, about the timing of Chambers. I'm trying to understand what that looks like. I knew there, I know there's a signal planned this year in the budget for Chambers and Red Sky. So I don't know what the completion date looks like and how the additional traffic of Chambers is going to impact the area in and around Gold Rush and being able to go take your kids to school and take them out from school. So I think that's a concern that's kind of intertwined with what's going on here. In addition to that, you know, maybe this is more of a request than anything, but you know, there's a lot of vegetation out there that's obviously going to get mowed over for the development, and, you know, as with any development project, you know, it always shows a lot of landscaping and, you know, pretty tall trees and all that good stuff, which clearly isn't going to be there. So, you know, I don't know if there's a way to save any of the vegetation for any of the parks, because candidly, nothing grows in this area outside of what's there already. And I can say that with certainty because we replaced tons of trees in the HOA right across the way. So I, I don't know what the plan is for, you know, grass over there as well, but I think we all know we have water problems out here, so the less grass that's required by the town of Parker, the final and all residential developers, I think, would be a good thing from a water use standpoint as well. Outside of that, I think that's, oh, the other question I had was how many homes will be in 1A and 1B when it's all said and done? I don't think that was shared specifically. So that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, sir. Chris, do you have anyone else?
Is there anyone else in Zoom that wishes to make a public comment at this time? Please raise your hand. There is not.
All right, then we will close the public comment period at 7:53, and Mr. Presswich, did you want to address any of those items that came up as a part of the public comment on, well, Chris Elliott can answer Chambers. Just call Tom tomorrow, we're good with that. But on Chambers, landscaping or reuse of landscaping or vegetation for parks, and then ultimately, how many homes in 1A, 1B?
I think B and C, that's what we're reviewing today. Maybe that's Ian's question, he said A and B, but.
He did, okay. C.
Well, we'll give you all three of them.
All right, perfect.
The timing on Chambers is as fast as possible, more likely to commence this summer, and again, it'll be built as a single phase, so we hope that it's completed within a year's time. And then John can address the landscaping issue, but you'll all remember the dendritic drainage requirements, which not only include leaving the land alone to accommodate historic drainage patterns and make the drainage ways look as natural as possible, it also includes leaving the vegetation in place within those drainage ways. And most of the park and open space areas are tied to the drainage ways, so they'll benefit from leaving the, the bulk of the existing vegetation there. It's very important to us, too. And Sarah, how many lots in 1A?
494.
494. And 5?
555.
555 and 1B?
7 or 477?
480 and 1C.
Now, you can talk about the trees.
Well, you, you, so the, the vegetation, as, as was mentioned, most of that existing vegetation is in the drainages which are being preserved. We're actually planting in areas that are disturbed open space. Your code permits that to be, you know, just reestablished as native seed, but we're actually planting those areas in addition to native seed, so we're exceeding that by, by a significant margin. I understand that when trees go in there, they start out small, but that's, that's just a function of time to, to, you know, have them grow, and, and we're using very limited amounts of turf, for sure.
Okay, thanks, sir. Appreciate it. All right, with that, I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:56. The time of the public hearing was 7:23 to 7:56 for the record, and council will bring it back for any further comments before we debate on this, and I'll start with the same way. Councilman Hendrix.
Just thank you for the presentation, and I know I'm a big fan of Parks and Rec, and I appreciate all the amenities you're bringing to this, this project, and also, I'll speak for Tom, thank you for Chambers Road, and hopefully we can have him not bug you as much now.
Councilmember Pogue.
Yeah, I agree. Chambers Road is a big win for the entire community, but I'm really very proud of your efforts to do something different with the parks. I've never seen these structures before. I can't wait. Thank you.
Councilman Rivera.
Thank you, taking Councilman Pogue's lead. I said it last time you were in front of us, but above and beyond, I think, is your, your motto. You guys really, really do. Whether it's meeting our needs on Chambers, whether it's meeting the neighbors' needs for the firehouse, it's, it's above and beyond, and then obviously with this preliminary plan showing us the parks and, and what you're planning on doing there is, is again, above and beyond. I must, the council would be disappointed if I don't state dendritic at least one time. I appreciate your recognition. I appreciate Mr. Elfnar's question. It is a battle that we had fought long and hard in this town, previously with Jason, Jacob James, and then obviously with, with Alex now, and, and under Tom's leadership, and you guys exceeded it. It was a dream we had. We wondered if it could come and, and we could do something dendritic that would benefit what, what assets Mother Nature had already given us, and you could show that we, we can and, and, and set a wonderful example. Again, I will say an example that is being watched by the state as far as stormwater, and, and they are impressed. So, again, well done on that. With that, it is my finding that the preliminary plans for Segment 1B and 1C are consistent with the master plan and have met and exceeded all required criteria and are compliant with the previously approved sketch plan. Well done.
Great. Councilman Dyak.
Thank you. Now, I guess I'll speak to the meandering sidewalk and, as well as the additional landscape. I mean, I think it makes sense to marry that up with the development on that or closer located to that, that, those, those features. It would be, it'd be challenging in, in my eyes to proactively do that. It would make sense, I guess, but I think it would create unintended consequences in trying to continue the maintenance of, of those landscape features, not to mention the meandering sidewalk. So I'm, I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington.
So, thank you for all the thoughtfulness that has gone into all of, everything. I want to move here, so. The artistic elements that you have incorporated into the playground, I'm on that bandwagon right now. So I know I'm not supposed to ask questions at this point, but it's real quick, and I think you told me before, what does Tantera mean? Is it? I'm sorry. I'm doing it wrong.
Well, we'll let you on this one.
Is it okay if I?
Yes, sir.
It's actually a, the name of a resort in Lake of the Ozarks that I went to 25 years ago, and I thought, what a great name and what a beautiful place. So it's been one of those that we keep on the list of project names that we'll try and use somewhere along the way. So now we got a great place to do it.
Yeah, I know, I like it. I like it a lot. This, I mean, I think everything, I'm really, everything looks great, and I think, also in my opinion, like, there's consistency with the master plan, consistency with the land development, and with zoning, so I'm, this all looks great to me.
Councilmember Hefta.
Yes. What I really appreciate about this development is that it provides for a variety of housing needs. You have single-family residential lots, you have townhome residential lots, you have duplex residential lots, and this allows many different types of people to come to Parker. People just starting out, people wanting to own a home, and people may be retiring as well. So the community that you've created allows a lot of different types of people to come to Parker in different stages of their lives. In addition, you have a school site for future development by Douglas County on your property. You are connecting the trails, and you've exceeded the open space and the park space both, and you've been very creative in your playground designs. So as a mother of small children, you really are always looking for a great place to take your kids to play. I am jealous of that pool that I won't be able to swim in because that is related to the, to the homeowners and that. That pool looks outstanding, so I think anybody moving from a different state or within Colorado will really have an opportunity to enjoy living in Tantera. Thank you.
Counsel, any further comments? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion on Segment 1B, 1C preliminary plan.
I move to approve the submitted Anthology North preliminary plans for Segment 1B and 1C, subject to the following condition. The remaining comments provided by Aztec Consulting Incorporated on January 4th, 2022 shall be addressed with each associated final plat.
Motion's made by Councilman Dyak, seconded by Councilman Rivera. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendrix?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next up, I'll entertain a motion on the Fifth Amendment to amended and restated Stro Ranch Hess Annexation Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Fifth Amendment to the amended and restated Stro Ranch Hess Annexation Agreement.
I'll second.
Motion's made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Hendrix. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendrix?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. All right, Tantera it is. All right. Tom, you'll call Chris tomorrow, ask about Chambers. Okay, perfect. All right, next up is the item number B for tonight, a public hearing on Chambers High Point in Com Park. I will open up the public hearing at 8:04, and you have applicants here to present. Stacy?
I have applicants to address you tonight, but they have no presentation.
Perfect, all right. So before we, before we get started, so we have Chambers High Point, then we have Com Park, so we'll, we'll take it as, we'll take the Chambers High Point first, and then we'll take Com Park, but are you going to do a presentation altogether?
Yep.
Okay. Hit it, and then we'll ask you questions.
All right. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, the applicant is requesting a minor development plat, which will subdivide 44.35 acres located at the southwest corner of E470 and Chambers Road into three lots, six tracks, and create the future Belford Avenue right away. In addition, there are two subdivision agreements associated with this proposed development before you tonight. All right. So there are two sites associated with tonight's hearing. Both developments are located along the southwest corner of Chambers and E470. Chambers High Point is located along Chambers Road, south of E470, while Com Park Village South is located west of Chambers High Point. Both developments are responsible for the construction of the future Belford Avenue that will provide access from Chambers Road to Peoria through the developments. So starting with the proposed Chambers High Point Minor Development Plat and Subdivision Agreement. The Chambers High Point property was annexed into the town on June 20th, 2016, as part of the Chambers High Point Plan Development. The Chambers High Point Plan Development allows for a mix of multifamily residential, south of Belford Avenue, and commercial uses, north of Belford Avenue. The proposed Chambers High Point Minor Development Plat proposes three lots and six tracks to create the infrastructure and superblock lots in support of the zoning. Lot 1 is 11.22 acres in size and is located in Planning Area A. This is for multifamily uses. And then Lot three is nine point seven three acres in size and located within Planning Area C for highway commercial uses. As required by the Chambers High Point Annexation Agreement, a six point eight two acre community separation buffer is required along the western and southern portions of the development. The community separation buffer is proposed to be platted as track A and is represented by the green area on the attached map. The development will be responsible for the construction of Belford Avenue from Chambers Road West to connect with Belford Avenue within the Com Park Village South development. Each lot proposed within the development will be accessed off of Belford Avenue through access points determined and approved through future final plats and site plan applications. Pursuant to the Chambers High Point Annexation Agreement, the development is required to provide seven point eight two acres of open space. The applicant is proposing a total of thirteen point nine seven four acres of open space that will consist of six point eight two acres located of, south of Belford Avenue as part of the community separation buffer, and seven point one seven five acres north of Belford Avenue along Happy Canyon Creek. All additional requirements, including building setbacks, architecture, landscaping, and design, will be reviewed as part of future site plan submittals. In association with the Chambers High Point Development Subdivision Agreement, or SIA, an amendment is proposed to the Com Park Village filing number, South filing number one subdivision agreement. The annexation agreements for the two properties have several shared obligations that require coordination and reimbursements. And the amendment is necessary to codify these shared obligations in accordance with the annexation agreements. There are three shared obligations between the two properties. The Belford Avenue Bridge over Happy Canyon Creek, major drainageway improvements to Happy Canyon Creek, and auxiliary lane improvements to Chambers Road. Currently, all of these improvements are fully secured in the Com Park Village South filing number one SIA. However, some of the improvements will be constructed by Chambers High Point. The proposed SIA amendments for Com Park Village South, in tandem with the SIA for Chambers High Point, will codify the proper construction obligations and reimbursements per the annexation agreements. Both property owners are in agreement regarding the division of work on the shared obligations. So staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. All plating requirements of the Chambers High Point Plan Development and land development ordinance have been satisfied. The proposal provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. All referral agency comments have been addressed. The public notice requirements have been satisfied, and the planning commission heard the Chambers High Point Minor Development Plat on January 27th, 2022, and recommended unanimous approval. Therefore, staff and the planning commission recommend Town Council approve the Chambers High Point filing number one Minor Development Plat and Subdivision Agreement. In addition, staff recommends the Town Council approve the First Amendment to the Com Park Village South filing number one subdivision agreement. This concludes staff's presentation. Both of the applicants for the different developments are here tonight and will address you.
Okay, great. We'll take questions for staff first, and then we'll get on to the applicants. We'll start to my left, Councilman Dyak.
No questions, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Barrington?
So, how much open spaces is required?
Per the annexation agreement, there's seven point, I should have this memorized. Seven point one, seven point eight two total acres are required per the annexation agreement. And they're, they're proposing thirteen point nine.
That's double. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Great. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I truly appreciate the cooperative nature of these developments. I just ask, walk me a little bit through worst-case scenario. What if Com Park doesn't go through? What if Chambers High Point doesn't go through? And we have cooperative agreements on said drainage bridge and/or Chambers Road, please?
Sure. So currently, with the Com Park Village South filing number one subdivision agreement, all of those shared improvements are fully secured. So we do have financial security that would allow us to make sure those are constructed at some point. The purpose of the amendment now is to kind of unwind that and make sure that we are adhering to the original annexation agreement, which called for reimbursements back and forth and shared obligations on some of those items. So, where I guess worst-case scenario, would nothing be approved tonight? We do have financial security to complete those improvements.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, obviously, this is buffering onto large acre lots. What is the width of the buffer between these proposed developments and those large acre lots?
I have that in here. Maybe. I want to say, and we can ask the applicant, I want to say it's about fifty feet on average of that buffer in that area. Well, it's, nope, it's the average of a hundred feet the whole way along the buffer.
Good. The next question has to do with dwelling units per acre. What are we normally seeing in dwelling units per acre for multifamily?
So, the towns code, if you went off the towns, multifamily designation allows up to thirty units per acre. I would say the town, through our multifamily, is probably seeing somewhere for true multifamily apartments or condominiums between fourteen and twenty.
And have they estimated the number of stories that they wanting, they're wanting to add here?
So we do have a site plan application submitted. I do think it is three stories.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions, mayor.
Okay, with that, we will turn to the applicants. And Stacy, do you want to introduce our applicants for tonight?
Yes, for Chambers High Point, we have Jeff Robinson, and then for Com Park Village South, we have Larry Jacobson.
Awesome. Good evening, gentlemen. If you'll come down and state your name and address for the record, and you have up to thirty minutes to talk.
Oh, gosh. I need about twenty seconds. My name's Jeff Robinson. I live at 424 Columbine Street, Denver, eight oh two oh six. I'm with Com Park 190. My company's name actually is Hampton Partners, and we've been in this investment for twenty-one years. And it's, it's finally nice to be here. Alex and Stacy have done a great job guiding us through the process. And, of course, now that our, our neighbors are active, getting some development work done, now it's time for this development to come to fruition. I really don't know if I have much to add to Stacy's comments. We've got a multifamily tract of, of about eleven, a little over eleven acres, and I believe they've proposed a hundred and ninety-five to two hundred units of multifamily there. And the highway commercial and light industrial or office tracks are now going to be actively marketed, as now we've got the money in the bank, and we're ready to put up the money for the SIA to get the infrastructure built. Our plan is to have it all built by the end of the year.
Excellent.
So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
We'll, we'll get around in there for you. We'll start the same. Councilman Dyak?
No questions. Thank you for your, your tenacious waiting game, the twenty-one years.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
All right, Councilmember Rivera?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pogue?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Well, Chambers Road, never mind.
There's always one. All right, thanks, sir. Did you have a question, Tom?
No.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Jacobson, you coming down?
Good evening, council. Happy to be back here. I'm Larry Jacobson with Westside Investment Partners, 4100 East Mississippi Avenue, Suite 500, Denver, eight oh two four six. First of all, I want to thank staff for diligently working through all these issues, and also thank Jeff Robinson for working with us. We had some shared obligations we had to finalize, and I think we've gotten to that point. I think, instead of saying, when is Chambers going to be built? The question in this, in this development is, when is Belford going to be built? So to answer Councilman Rivera's question, we've actually already started the last several hundred feet on the east side of our project, which takes Belford to the edge of Happy Canyon, and then builds a bridge over Happy Canyon, and then ends up in Chambers High Point. Chambers High Point's going to build from Chambers out to the east side of the bridge. So, you know, we're looking forward by the end of the year to seeing Belford connect all the way from Peoria to Chambers. So that should unlock this whole area for a lot of primary employment and perhaps some other fiscally positive development, as well as the residential, which is coming.
Excellent, excellent. Questions? Councilman Dyak?
No, I think Councilmember Hendricks took my line of, Tom Williams texted me, and when is Belford Avenue going to be built? Mr. Jacobson took care of that, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions, thanks.
Councilmember Rivera?
No questions for Mr. Jacobson. I guess the question for staff, all paper needs were met this evening. We are good to go.
Okay, Councilmember Pogue?
No questions, good to go.
Councilman Hendricks?
I'll spare you this time.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you. And just for our Councilmen Riveros, when I went out and toured Com Park with Bo Martinez, he did point out all the dendritic design that was out there, so.
And it continues in Happy Canyon Creek.
Exactly, exactly. All right, thanks, sir. With that, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone in the room wishing to make public comment on these two projects? Or, Chris, do we have anyone online?
If there's anyone on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment, please raise your hand. No, there is not.
There's not? Okay, with that, then we're going to close public comment, and we're going to close the public hearing at eight eighteen. PM and counsel will bring it back to you for comments, debate, and I'm going to start the same way. Councilmember Dyak?
No debate. Appreciate developers working together to try to take care of things. It's always positive to get infrastructure started and potentially completed in short order, so supportive of what's in front of us. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Barrington?
I would like to see every council member work the word dendritic into their comments. So, twenty-one years in the works. I can appreciate that because my daughter just turned twenty-two. I can't imagine the patience you must have. And I think that's the only comment I have, but thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, once again, when developers come to town council and they're meeting the needs of the community, it's greatly appreciated. You're meeting the needs of the community by providing a variety of housing densities in close proximity to employment centers and the E-470 corridor. The ability to bring new businesses and to our community and retail community and diversity of business types is also appreciated. And when you do that, you're bringing new jobs, new people, new opportunities by your development. And, again, thank you for your patience over the last twenty-one years to bring this to fruition. Again, I would like to also state that Parker's a unique community, and we have the natural resources, the, the water, the, the structure to support our, our housing needs and our retail needs. And that's really, really important. Other communities do not have that in Colorado. And so people always ask, why are we bringing more hous, housing communities and retail business centers to our town? We can support it. And so that's important for the public to know.
Councilman Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff, and thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Jacobson, truly appreciated. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're on this project. We've seen success to the projects to the south and getting those off the ground. I'm glad you're tied to this one now. This one's important, mostly for, not mostly for, but definitely for the infrastructure. And, you know, the Belford Avenue connection, the main drainageway for Happy Canyon is a FEMA nightmare, and you've tackled it, well done. And then the Chambers Road improvements, absolutely. And I just, I have to reiterate again to, to the citizens how important the partnerships are with our developers, because they are the ones that invest the time and the energy into the infrastructure improvements. And the cooperative nature between these gentlemen and their parties is outstanding to get some, some much-needed improvements in infrastructure to our, to our western boundaries. So for that reason, on the second, two, second and third shared, or I'm sorry, I'm forgetting my words here as I speak, subdivision improvement plans, I find that the cooperative nature and the guarantees to the citizens are above and beyond, and well done. And with that, for the minor development plan, I find that the proposed plan is consistent with the master plan, and the minor development plan is consistent with the town's LDO. Again, well done.
Thank you. Josh? Councilmember Heft, uh, Pogue, sorry.
Yeah, I appreciate the diversity you're bringing to this area. It doesn't really have much in the way of multifamily housing to support the business area that's growing up there. And to include your recommendation to include dendritic design. I love dendritic design, and, Mr. Williams, I love low-water crossings.
Councilman Hendricks? Top that, top that.
Just want to say thanks to everyone involved with this dendritic project. Thank you.
All right, with that, counsel, I will entertain a motion on item number 1A, the minor development plat for Chambers High Point.
I move to approve the Chambers High Point filing number one minor development plat based on staff findings.
I'll second.
Laura, second. Motion's made by Councilman Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Last up is a motion on Com Park, First Amendment to Com Park Subdivision Agreement.
I move to approve the First Amendment to the Com Park Village South filing number one subdivision improvement, improvement agreement, and I do believe it meets all criteria, and based on staff findings.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilman Rivera. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Last up is a motion on Com Park, First Amendment to Com Park Subdivision Agreement.
I move to approve the First Amendment to the Com Park Village South filing number one subdivision improvement, improvement agreement, and I do believe it meets all criteria, and based on staff findings.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilman Rivera. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six oh, and we're adjourned at eight twenty-four.